All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM Tuesday, April 25, 2023. City Council meeting. I'd like to introduce the meeting. It acknowledged that the press and the public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Joining in standing for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the beauty of it. Thank you for watching over us and keeping us safe. Just be with us as we conduct the city's business tonight. That we'll do it with respect and have the greater good in mind as we take care of this business, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole?
Councilmember Popson. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Bogosian.
He's on Zoom.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Randy Bell.
Well, thank you again. First thing I want to say, I want to thank the Public Safety Department for their incredible response to the incidents that we have on the beach. And for any criticism that's been out there on that, I know I'm proud of having been involved in hiring some of you, and I don't think you could have done a more amazing job for the community. So, thank you. Comment on a couple of things. You know, the debate on the noise ordinances, which are interesting. When you think about... I didn't do that. Noise ordinances are kind of interesting. When I sat up there, we had this same debate over and over. So, the first thing that happens when you have a noise violation, the police show up at your house, and the first thing that happens is see blue lights, and the noise goes away. So, I don't know how we expect to pass noise ordinances with decibel levels when the normal human behavior is to stop doing what you're doing when the police show up. So, I went on and looked a little further, and I think three years ago, we changed the ordinance to five founded complaints. And with five founded complaints in a calendar year, you could be, you could have your rental license removed. What that requires in the current ordinance is that that individual license come in front of this council for a very subjective review, and I'm sure Mac would have a lot of commentary to go along with that. It is a bad ordinance the way it's written. It's not enforced. It's the number of cars associated with bedrooms, the number of people in beds. We don't do bed counts. And the simple reality is, I went through the information I could find. We have had, the last report, and by the way, these reports are way too buried in workshop packages right now. If I can't find them, I'm pretty sure most people can't. We managed, in our enforcement for livability, to give out 13 rolling cart citations. Those trashcan citations. Out of 16 complaints for noise, five were unfounded, zero citations. So, I don't know about you folks, when I speed and the nice officer gives me a warning, I might speed again right after that. They give me a ticket, which has a consequence associated with it. I'm pretty sure that I'm not speeding again, right? So, to continue with these enforcement endeavors, and five of you sitting up there that think enforcement is the answer to short-term rentals is ludicrous. There's no teeth in this. We don't enforce, and I'm not criticizing the police department. I want to be clear. And I've had lots of conversations with Desiree. We need to take a look at these ordinances and put ordinances in place that are enforceable and do what the community is asking everybody to do. I just went a little further, and I said, October 26, 2010, everybody kind of looks at you like you're crazy. That's the last time this city has removed or suspended anybody's short-term rental license.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
I need you to wrap your comments up, please.
This is like the first time I've pressed my limit. Well, I don't have a lot else to say other than, please, look at these serious and get off this nonsense that enforcement is the answer to a short-term rental issue, because it simply alone is not going to cut it. Thank you.
Rachel Farley. Bev Miller.
Good evening, Council. Bev Miller for Barrier Island Preservation Alliance, 3 Fairway Village Lane. I want to begin by thanking you for placing the resolution to oppose House Bill 3253 on tonight's agenda. Has two components equally egregious. The first undermines the principle of local governance by taking away a municipality's decision-making authority within city limits and gives that authority back to the state. Under current law, home rule is the exercise of independent authority by elected local governments under local governance rules in South Carolina Code laws. Local governance. This council has discussed home rule for several issues. The second component of the bill is punitive through the withholding of certain state funding if a municipality regulates short-term rental licenses within its jurisdiction. As Senator Campson pointed out during the budget proceedings, South Carolina Code states that for the distribution of local government funds, a certain percentage of that fund, in quotes, must be distributed to municipalities, end quote. Must. Not should, not could, not may. So, to be clear, it does not matter where you stand on the issue of whether or not to limit short-term rentals. That's not what you're voting on in this resolution. You're voting to retain the ability to govern for what's best for your community. As elected officials of Isla Palms, you are accountable to the residents of your community. Yet, under this bill, you would be unable to respond to citizens' needs because of restrictions by the state. So, here's our ask. Please carefully consider the provisions of the bill, not only its impact on your governance within this city and the constituents you represent, but also the punitive punch to the city. Send a message to the legislature that this city believes in the preservation of local governance granted to all cities by the state of South Carolina. Two, the bill will be heard before the House Municipal Affairs Subcommittee tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. If, in fact, this resolution is approved, we ask that you send a council member, whether in person or via Zoom, to Columbia tomorrow, April 26, to deliver and read the resolution into the record. Please let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Patsy Heinman.
Thank you. I'm Patsy Heinman, 7 Barnacle Row, and I'm here to talk about the connector. Early on, when the survey first came out, I probably voted within the first hour of the link being posted, and I voted for option five, because I wasn't thinking. Just two lanes off, that's great. Then, before long, word came out that there was a problem with the original survey, and it had to be redone. So, there was a second link for the survey revised, and I voted again for option five. That's before I knew that our very fine public officials back there were in favor of option three. So, I went back again, and I voted for option three. Now, right away, that calls into question the validity of the survey, where I know that I voted three times. I've since heard that they scrubbed the results so that nobody could vote from one location more than once. So, which of my votes did you save? The one that I would want you to save is the one for option three. Now, why is that? Our public officials are the people that I would trust if I'm in a life-and-death situation on this island on a day that's crowded with heavy traffic and we can't get off. They have experience going, trying to get through traffic when cars are bumper-to-bumper. They know that option three is better than option five. So, I don't understand why any of you up there would think that you know better than our public safety officials, what's the safest thing for the island. I think you think that it's expediency, that if you have a second lane, people will get off the island more quickly. And I maintain that's not the case. What lets you get off the island more quickly is if you could get through the stoplight at Rifle Range Road more quickly. Now, one of the things you could do was modify the cycle so that more cars could get through in a given period of time. So, my understanding, they tried that last year for a short period, and there was so much blowback from people driving on Rifle Range that they said, "We're not going to do that anymore." Well, let's suppose that they agree and say, "Okay, we're going to do something. We'll give you another minute in every cycle for cars outbound." Just exactly how many cars will get through in that extra minute? I don't know the answer, but somebody could actually sit down and count and figure that out. But until you find that out, I have to ask again, that has nothing to do with the number of lanes. It has to do with the timing of the stoplight. So, in the meantime, what would it cost us to go with no emergency lane? It could cost us a life and death. If you imagine yourself, you're on the connector, cars are bumper-to-bumper, there's two lanes, so there's a car right next to you, there's cars coming towards you, there's a car in front of you, and a car behind you, and way back in the back, you see sirens going off and red lights. You want to move over, but where do you move when there's that much traffic? All right, let's suppose that gradually, one kind of sneaks forward, one moves back a little bit, and you can get your car in there. How many other cars have to go through that same maneuver before our emergency personnel can get by? I think it's a lot, and I don't see why anyone doesn't want an emergency lane, especially given that our public safety officials recommend that.
Miss Heinman.
When something happens to somebody, are you going to be able to look yourself in the mirror, knowing that you voted for something that may have contributed to their death because they couldn't get off the island fast enough?
Mr. Klaus.
Al Klaus, 3 Ram Pavilion, noise ordinance. On March 28, April 4, April 11, we respectfully requested for council to assure and commit to us in writing, our administration will enforce noise ordinance 925. No response. Subsequently, on April 13, we provided a written request via email only to the city council and administration regarding the above. No response. Your actions, or lack thereof, are unacceptable. You have a responsibility to respond to your constituency. Or are you telling us with your silence, you are not going to enforce said ordinance? Actually, you have already told us. Five citations issued, all in the same night, as a result of over 50 calls in the past two years. Section 925 BC addresses, quote, amplified music, unquote, stating, "It is unlawful," unquote. For some reason, our administration does not enforce said ordinance, even when we said, even when said amplification has a negative impact on the livability of residents in this community. Lack of enforcement has evolved into a legal nuisance by the Sweetgrass Inn, per section 925 I, 1 and 2. Lack of enforcement has perpetrated said nuisance. Bluntly, our administration is part of the situation. Further proof, the city's legal council has carved out the above nuisance section in the proposed noise ordinance. In other words, if you do not want to be accountable for enforcement, extinguish it. We have provided you detailed video regarding the March 31 and the April 15 events, along with a detailed explanation. Regarding Terry Hack's comments dated 4/11, when it's in your pack, one of your packets, quote, "We acknowledge that noise from Sweetgrass Inn has the ability to impact surrounding neighborhoods, and we are committed to mitigating this impact," unquote. The above said events did not meet our expectations regarding mitigation. Mrs. Hack previously stated there would no longer be vehicles, food trucks, et cetera, in the green area behind us except July 4. As of April 19, we now have a camping trailer parked in our backyard. February sound study and events. A 30,000-foot view, which has no statistical data to support the resort's request. No dates, no numbers of attendees at stated events. February was a ghost town. Mrs. Hack stated we would receive some version of the sound study, nothing to date. Thank you.
Laura Lovins.
Laura Lovins, 5 Links Clubhouse Court. I actually have two topics that I wanted to address this evening. It was very encouraging to learn of the third arrest from the shooting incident on April 7, and I commend the police force for their wonderful work. I'm here tonight to respectfully urge the council to pass some of the excellent safety measure recommendations that were presented by both citizens and Chief Cornet. Since many of the ideas will require funding from our city budget, I would recommend that you go for some of the low-hanging fruit options first that make sense. For instance, passing an ordinance that would require a permit for a specific number of people on the beach. You could charge a reasonable amount for the permit, and this money could actually go towards funding additional safety measures. There really ought to be an ordinance about banning firearms and knives. There's an ordinance about no alcohol, but I see nothing about firearms and knives. I realize that a license plate reader is actually being put into the budget for 2024, and this would be for the connector. Is there any way, in light of what happened, that this could potentially get moved earlier to this year? It's so critical that we know, and I think Councilmember Han mentioned this, you know, we need to know who's coming on and off our island, and the license plate reader would go a long way towards that. The other safety ideas that require funding, like a canine team, the person that could legally fly a drone who's not a police officer, all of that does need funding, and I recommend that you fully and quickly vet those options to see whether they can be implemented now rather than later. Time is of the essence, and it would be very naive to think that this unfortunate event won't happen again. I'm going to move to my second topic. I'm sure you are aware of the resuscitation of House Bill 3253, which bans municipalities from prohibiting or restricting short-term rentals. The fact that there was an attempt to get it passed by State Senator Sandy Sen, who doesn't even represent any of the Barrier Islands in Charleston, is egregious enough, let alone the fact that it violates home rule. We have already lived through and are still dealing with the overreach of home rule by SCDOT with the restripping of our connector. This current bill is punitive and a slap at municipal governments all along the coast. I respectfully request that this council pass a resolution to oppose House Bill 3253 and stand up for our municipality and others along the coast, and help us maintain our home rule authority to legislate in our jurisdiction and their jurisdictions. Thank you.
Jim Rye.
We have a problem on the island, and, you know, how do we solve that problem? What is that problem? What's the root cause of that problem? And how do we go about fixing the problem? It's going to have to be a team effort. You know, the Isla Palms was founded, if you go back and look at the history, it's the Coney Island of the South. You build it, and they'll come. And, you know, that's what it is. Everybody wants to come here, and it's a beautiful place. The only real solution to the problem I see is total dreadlock. When it's so busy, nobody can move, nobody can go on or off the island. And remember the old days when you had to go over to Mount Pleasant, Sullivan's Island to get here? I mean, it was a long day just to come out here for, to enjoy the beach for the day. And, you know, the good news is nobody died, you know, during the incident, the mass shooting on the island, but it's a tri-county problem, and the growth of the tri-county problem is not going to stop. It's not going to slow down. There's a lot of undeveloped land still to be developed. I think we have to work with the state highway department, highway patrol, traffic unit, Charleston County Motorcycle Unit, and it's kind of like going to the Clemson football game, you know? Everybody wants to go to the Clemson football game and partake in the pre-game or post-game activities, but only so many people can get in to see the game. If you've never been to the NCAA Basketball Final Four week, a week, it's a week-long activity, and it's a beautiful event all week. The game is the game, but people go there for the week. It's like a Super Bowl week. We need to treat it like that, a big event like that. This is a vacation destination, and it, I don't see that changing. I think the Isla Palms PD's presence on the roads has been a good thing, and I see it increased day by day. And please don't get me wrong, if you can buy a place on the island, and you get somebody to take care of your yard, and maybe take care of your pool, clean your house, all that is great, but you have to have service people to service those houses. I'm a full-time resident, I live out here, but some of the service people are some of the worst offenders. Flying around the corner at 41st and Palm to get to work in the morning, it's like a racetrack down there, if you've never seen it down there. It's not a slow-down-and-yield-and-stop there. Parking on the side streets, the Palm Boulevard in the side streets with their units, they're some of the worst offenders, and I have nothing wrong with it. If you can own a place out here and pay for somebody to take care of it, that's great, but, you know, we need to all work together. And you can say that guy's crazy, he's nuts, he's lost it. The fact is that I moved here at the age of 18 to start my professional business career. 39 years later, I'm fortunate, by the grace of God, to live here on the island.
Mr. Rye.
He's the last one.
Thank you. Thank you all for that. Next item is special presentations. Janice, you want to introduce city's new employees for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce the first employee is Chandra Yuchchenka. Chandra is our new hire as a public relations and tourism coordinator. She grew up in Barneswell, South Carolina. She attended South Carolina University. After graduating, she took a position with the university as their PR coordinator. She enjoys her husband and her family time. She enjoys roller skating and visiting amusement parks. So, what's your favorite amusement park?
Hi, Caroline.
Yes. Thank you. Welcome. Next, I'd like to introduce Nikki Coleman. Nikki is a native of the Low Country. Your grandmother has a saying, "You are a true princess." What does that mean?
Of Mount Pleasant.
She attended the College of Charleston and Charleston Southern University. She's coming from MUSC, where she worked in the grant department. She is her husband's little secret online agent for his art gallery. She also volunteers for Hope and for the Woodwind Farm Orphanage in... Welcome.
Thank you.
Please.
Very nice.
She's our new licensing clerk in the building department. Oh, thank you, Desiree. Tammy is our new assistant recreation director. She grew up in Bristol, Virginia. She attended King University in Tennessee. Tammy was the former executive director for Tanger Outlets, and she is also one of our instructors for a fitness program here. Tammy holds numerous years of experience, over 25 years of experience, and she's a certified fitness group and fitness spinner. She specializes in yoga, Pilates, kickboxing. So, what's your favorite?
Probably kickboxing.
Oh, be careful, everyone. Be careful. I'd like to introduce Owen Bailey. Owen is also new to our staff over as a recreation specialist, but you might recognize him as he is from Isla Palms. Grew up doing recreation sports and worked for us part-time in the summer. He's a graduate of Clemson. His activities are watching NBA and college football. So, NBA team, which is it?
Thunder, Oklahoma City.
Ooh, are they in the playoffs?
They were in the play-in.
Oh, the play-in. All right. Take me to better luck next year. Thank you, Owen. I'd like to introduce Mike Miller. Mike is a new addition to our fire staff. Mike is from Columbus, Ohio. After graduating Ohio State, he moved to Charleston area where he began his fire career. Mike enjoys being with his family and fishing. So, you listed offshore fishing.
Inshore.
Inshore fishing.
Inshore.
I really didn't know what they all were. All right, so, size of the fish that maybe you've gotten?
Walrus and dolphins are my favorites.
Okay.
But I do think shore, creek, that's...
All right, so, if you want to go fishing?
I'm hooking and fishing.
Yeah. Partner up with him. Thank you, Mike. Patrick is from Ocean Grove, New Jersey, where he began his career in 2002 at a nearby town. He then made his way south, and previously, before joining our team, he was over in the Mount Pleasant Fire Department. So, you have a very interesting competition you do yearly. You want to talk about that?
I do a lot of ocean rescue competitions with the United States Life Saving Association. I run a beach patrol back home in New Jersey, so being down here makes it a little tough, but I take my time to go home and still keep up with that with my certifications. And every year in August, we have a national competition team, which I go out and compete against the best in the country.
It's sort of like the Olympics, you said.
Yeah.
So, have we won?
It's like our Olympics for us.
Have you won any medals?
Yeah.
Like what?
I've gotten first before in the surf boat race, which is a rowing event in the ocean, and then also some of the paddling events.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Thank you, Janice. Welcome to each one of you. Glad to have you with us. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We have the special city council executive session on March 28, 2023, city council meeting on March 28, 2023, emergency meeting on April 8, special city council workshop on April 11, and committee meeting minutes are attached in your package.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any edits or changes from anyone?
Councilmember Pierce provided just a few small ones to you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
It's made to March 28.
Any others?
No, they're minor.
Minor, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Amy, are they on? Sorry.
They're on through to down. They couldn't hear us.
Got it. Okay, that's fine. Next item is old business. We have presentation by SCDOT and discussion of the IOP Connector Bridge, alternative configurations, survey results, and update on development of concepts for Palm Boulevard. We've got Rob Parries back with us again tonight from SCDOT. Been with us a number of times before. Thank you for being here. We've got Jennifer Bill, who is our IOP consultant, that's kind of overseeing all the work that SCDOT does. And just, Rob, real quick, by way of background, you recall the SCDOT agreed to perform a review of the IOP Connector and various travel patterns, engaged an area expert, RK&amp;K, I believe is their firm that they have been using for that. In December, the SCDOT presented city council with five alternatives, five alternative configurations for the connector prepared by RK&amp;K. On the 18th, the SCDOT launched a 30-day public comment period online, and then April 4, the SCDOT provided the city with the results of those surveys. You've seen some of the numbers, but just a quick reminder, approximately 3,300... You've seen some of the numbers, but just quick reminder, approximately 3,300 citizens responded to the survey, about 48% indicated they lived on the Isle of Palms. Top-ranked concerns were reducing traffic congestion and improving safety and mobility. So, Rob, we've asked you to come tonight, take it wherever you want to take it. We'll have questions, obviously, when you finish. The survey results kind of speak for themselves, but would be glad to hear what you have to tell us. Thanks for coming.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pounds. Thank you, councilmember's staff. And it's wonderful to see you recognizing your wonderful new staff you've hired. It's always a good thing to do to celebrate the good stuff, because good stuff is happening at local governments as well as the state level. I think you stole most of my thunder, Mayor Pounds, because you've already hit on a lot of the results.
And you came all that way for that.
No, it's like I'm at the house. No, I'm just kidding. So, yeah, the survey did close February 17th. That was after the 30-day period, and I do want to openly apologize for the hiccups that we had that opening weekend, because it seemed like we would fix one thing and something else would break. So it really went live that Monday. I think that's when we had everything squared away and corrected. It's always fun working with a firm out of California to try and do an online survey. So lessons learned there. We completed the survey in March. As you mentioned, we had 3,985 responses, but we did have RK&amp;K go through and take out the double IP addresses, trying to keep from there being double votes. You did talk about the improved safety for all was what led, improved safety mobility ranked the highest in Figure 2 at 36%. 86% ranked traffic safety great to average, and 87% ranked traffic congestion at SC 517 at Palm Boulevard as poor. You all live here, you all know it better than I do. It's definitely a challenge, especially in the PM peaks during peak season. From there, we had 49% that chose existing configuration with the four and five stars, but 24%, I believe, did not like it. Let me make sure I said that right, because I don't want... Yes. 36% gave it a one star. And then, obviously, Option 5 had 50% approval rating with four and five stars, with 36% ranking a one star. Really, the biggest thing that I kind of took away from it is the options 1 through 4. They really just did not rate well with the people that took the surveys. So I know that there was one option that we talked about at length, I think, in December, but really Option 5 was the one that clearly had the highest of votes. It's positive with four to five stars, so... And then the other thing you touched on was the number of people. We had 210 unique zip codes that took the survey, but 48% called Isle Palms Dewey's Island Home. And of that, 30% said they worked in that zip code. So that's kind of the 30,000-foot of the survey. I know there were 83 pages or so of it, but a lot of it were just general comments. So I didn't really see a point in getting into those, because they were all over the place, as expected. But I will say this, and I mentioned this to Ms. Fregosa and the chiefs, you know, it's when we do a public meeting in person, we're lucky if we get 100 or 200 people. So to get several thousand is a pretty good response for us. And we've had some public meetings where we had five people show up, and, you know, we're always happy to have those public meetings. And I tell the citizens, and I say, "You're not going to like what I've got to say." I say, "No, I need to know what you have to say. That's why we're doing this public meeting." So with that, I'll take any questions that the council may have, or I'll get out of the way for Ms. Bill or one of the chiefs.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to discuss this now or later in the agenda? Is it right now? Thank you for being here. In terms of the survey itself, there's a large number, obviously, of Isle of Palms respondents in the survey. Can you give us an idea of how many respondents we had off-island, Mount Pleasant, surrounding areas?
Sure, we can get that to you. I'll just have to get RK&amp;K to pull it, because I think all we gave was the 48% was on island, but I can get that to you.
Do you recall if the respondents from out of this zip code were in favor of the Option 5?
It didn't really break it that way. It just had total. So I don't even know if RK&amp;K has that, but that's something we can check on and follow up, if that's what the will of your council would like to have that information. I don't mind seeing if RK&amp;K can pull it. We try not to get into the data on our end, let them just do their thing.
Another question. With Mount Pleasant, they haven't seen the results of the survey yet formally. They may have a copy of it, but I understand that's going to be presented to their council next month?
I submitted the survey to them the same day I provided it to your staff, and I let them know that at some point I would be coming down here, I thought it was tonight, and that I follow up with them and offer them the same opportunity to present if that's what they want.
And my last question, before I turn it over, is the restriping, if you will, on the other side of the connector where it meets the land, on the land side there, from there down to seaside farms, I guess, Rifle Range and that area there. Has that been done recently? Would that, has that built or been done to accommodate an additional lane all the way to Rifle Range at some point, coming off the island?
It was recently restripped, about a month ago, and I did let Ms. Fregosa know that was happening, because I figured you all might be getting some phone calls, what the heck is going on over there, is that related to this survey? And it wasn't. Charleston or Mount Pleasant went and sought some, I think, grant funding, maybe from the CTC, and it was really trying to better utilize the lanes at Rifle Range Road, because they were really having issues of getting people through that, and it was an improvement for vehicular traffic. But no, it was not a part of this, and it was not to, I guess, accept two lanes coming off the island. So if we were to move forward, if the council took an action of some sort, obviously, we would go, we'd have to go further, specialist Option 5, to really start studying those intersections, which I think some of your citizens signed up to speak about today, because we've got to make sure it works on both ends, because it doesn't matter if we put two lanes off if we don't look at Rifle Range and Palm. So that would be our next step, if we were to move forward with Option 5, is to have RK&amp;K go, and that not only will they study those intersections, they will do a full set of plans, they will work to look and see if what right-of-way we have, whether we would need new right-of-way, whether there will be utility impacts, or it would go into a full-blown design.
And, Rob, that's really true of any option, whatever option we come up with, next steps or...
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm certainly not trying to steer you one way or the other. I just wanted to know that would be the next steps, if y'all took some action.
Scott?
Yeah, just a quick question. In any of these subsequent studies, I imagine this could take a season or two to get everything implemented.
It just depends, you know. That's where I think in December, Councilwoman Anderson was asking about some of the options, and I didn't want to give you a timeframe, because you'd never know. You get into having to move gas lines or overhead power lines or right-of-way and...
I'm just trying to set expectations.
Yes, you're right. There's no way that there'll be anything this season.
We wouldn't see anything this season. We want to do it thoughtfully and make sure that we've got both ends.
And it will take us a while to negotiate adding all this to RK&amp;K's scope, because we didn't add it because we didn't know if we were, one, going to move forward something, two, what it was going to be. So in the interest of taxpayer funding, we wanted to get through this. But no, great, great point, sir.
Jan.
This may be hearsay, but I heard it myself, so I'm going to pass it on. I ran into Mayor Will Haney of Mount Pleasant a few weeks ago, and he basically indicated that the town saw this as being the choice, Isle Palms' choice, that you may not hear from Mount Pleasant on a preference on this. So I'll just put that out there. The other thing he mentioned, which I was really interested in, was the signals along the connector from Highway 17 to Rifle Range Road are controlled, I guess you maintain them, but are controlled by the town of Mount Pleasant, and they are undertaking a study now, as I understand, to retime all of those signals. Is that correct?
I'm not sure about the study, but yes, we have signalmates agreements with a lot of our larger municipalities, and we'll essentially reimburse them a certain amount of funding to maintain our signals, because if you're the driver, you don't know whose it is, you just know it's a signal.
Yeah.
And so within these city limits of major cities, you know, like downtown Charleston maintains a lot of our signals, we'll turn over that, and it will give us some funding.
So they might have misunderstood. So the next question is then, the only intersections that are included in this part of the study are the Rifle Range Road intersection and the Palm Boulevard intersection. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, right now.
Okay. All right, that's fine. I think that definitely, for anyone who has been asking, whatever the alternative is that's chosen, there will be improvements to those two intersections. It's a full package. It's not an either-or, it's a both-and kind of situation. And I believe, as a traffic engineer, that that will really improve our traffic flow on the island. And then, since we started this project, I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered that recently, city council agreed to put in our budget for next year hiring six paralegals to permanently staff...
Paramedics?
Paramedics, sorry. We need paralegals to... Paramedics.
We have lawsuits.
Yeah, paramedics to permanently staff the island so that we can improve our response time for medical emergencies on the island. I think that, with the improvements that you are promising for the connector, I think we are going to have better emergency service both to the island and from the island. So it's a complete package.
So, Rob, I want to ask you a couple of things, and both chiefs, I do want to hear from both y'all tonight, because I think there's words being put in your mouth, and we just might go on record again tonight to let you folks opine on your thoughts on these options. But, Rob, I'd like to hear from you, you know, a lot of conversations with residents about safety, obviously, and whether it's vehicular or bike or walker or whatever. So currently, you know, the buffer between the travel lane and the pedestrian lane is three and a half feet on each side right now. And on any of the options that we're looking at, other than the existing configuration, it goes to either five or six feet. So pretty significant increase in the buffer. I mean, what's your, and Jennifer, welcome, comments from you two? I mean, what's your view of that safety?
Well, obviously, whenever you have traffic moving beside pedestrian bicyclists, the greater the buffer, the better, and the lower the speeds, the better, and the lower the volumes of traffic, the better, because you want to reduce those opportunities for conflicts, right? So, yeah, obviously, we tried to use as much, get as much space as we could to add, to increase the buffer, because, but there's only so much width in between those two barrier walls, right? And that's why I think we also went with the two-foot shy line from the edge of the barrier wall over, because you've got those drainage scuppers. So we certainly don't want somebody running over one of those or riding a bike over one of those. So we tried to get as much space as we could, and I think we went down to 11-foot travel lanes, which is, you know, still a foot wider than what the old Grace Memorial Bridge had on it, but it is something that we can live with, is 11-foot travel lanes.
And with the additional buffer between the pedestrian and the travel lanes?
Yes, sir.
Because I know there's been conversation about hard barrier, soft barrier, and y'all, that's been a non-starter for y'all, I think, and for folks that clean the connector, I don't think that's very helpful to have a hard barrier sitting up there. But again, I'm certainly not a traffic engineer.
Yeah, we'd see some challenges. If we put a concrete barrier wall up where the buffer is, we'd see some challenges in getting in and out to pump those scuppers out that collect the rainwater that we have to do. I'm certainly not going to speak for the chiefs on incident response. I'm going to stay in my lane and be an engineer and not law enforcement or firemen. But no, we would see some challenges if we did that. And then we also talked about raised delineators. Y'all have probably seen the ones that been, you know, they're just a maintenance nightmare. And, you know, I don't think we'd be able to maintain 10,000 feet of that to the city's liking, and I think it would probably be a nuisance as far as appearance if we put those raised. And the raised delineators, they don't stop a car from driving over them, they just give the appearance of separation, but a car can drive right through them.
And, Rob, I guess you guys, I mean, we're trying to balance all kind of safety things here by best utilizing the real estate on this bridge. And I guess I think about, in some of these roads you own, some you don't, I mean, I think about bike riding on Rifle Range. I mean, you couldn't pay me to bike ride on Rifle Range. There is no lane on that. 17, I mean, Palm Boulevard, I mean, I just, I don't ride my bike on that, but that's my choice, obviously. I mean, any comment on that? I mean, it seems like whichever option, you know, we wind up with, it seems like it's better buffering between pedestrian and travel lanes, regardless of which option we pick.
If the buffer is better...
I don't know if I have a question in there or not, quite honestly. It just, it seems like we're getting to the best spot we can.
I think we're trying to strike the best balance with the room we have, but, you know, ideally, if you were going to do two-way, you'd probably go instead of five feet in both directions for pedestrian bicyclists. If it was a brand-new bridge today, you'd probably go eight to 10, you know? But that's when you go through and you retrofit existing structures, existing routes. Really, at the national level, you know, national-level designs, they look at it as a green field, i.e. there's no houses in your way, there's no limits to money or width. And really, at the national design level, they're starting to veer away from that, because our roads are built out, so we're having to really retrofit some of these accommodation facilities to fit best, because we don't want to do things like have to relocate a bank for a turn lane, right? Those are the kind of things that the practitioner on the ground's got to make that best decision with the tax dollars.
Claire, and then chiefs, if you guys don't mind making your way, we'd love to hear from y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. First, you're familiar with South Carolina statute 57-5-820?
I'm not. I'm not attorney.
Well, 5820, what that says is that all work performed by SCDOT on state highways within a municipality must be done with our consent and approval. And I know that y'all ignored that law when you restripped the connector. Do you plan to uphold that law and follow that law in this situation?
Councilmember, I'm not here to answer that question. I'm not going to get into...
Well, it's an important question, isn't it?
Well, I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer, so I'll answer engineer questions for you, but I'm not going to get into home rule or state statute.
I'm not talking to you about home rule, I'm just talking about the law. All I'm doing is trying to get everybody to follow the law. But we'll move on. Are you aware of Highway Guard? Highway Guard is a company that's been approved in both Georgia and in North Carolina, and they have metal-hard barriers. Those barriers are 60 pounds per foot, and they open so that you can get in and clean scuppers, and you can have a hard barrier between pedestrians and vehicles. Would you agree that that's a safer alternative to just having four feet of asphalt?
I could certainly look into it.
Would you agree that's a safer alternative?
Obviously, separating vehicular traffic from pedestrians and bicyclists in any positive manner of a barrier is a safer way than just a painted buffer on the ground.
Thank you. It's highwayguard.com. They're approved in both Georgia and North Carolina.
We'll check it out.
And, Rob, can I ask you one more? Chiefs, thank you. Sorry for patience. If you look at options three and four, so both have a 10-foot, what you're calling, or RK&amp;K is calling a paved median right in the middle. And chiefs, I will ask you all to opine on this too when you come up, but have, has our narrative taken that to be an emergency lane? I mean, what is, from an engineering standpoint, what's the use of that paved median to be?
It's just a flush median, you know? If it wasn't on a bridge, it would be a two-way left turn lane, a twiddle for driveways. But obviously, since that bridge has no turn lanes, because it's 10,000 feet long, it's not obviously used for turns, but it's just a flush painted median. It's not having official use that I'm aware of.
Okay. So we hear from our chiefs at this point, Rob, if you don't mind. And chief, again, if y'all can just talk to the options and what, again, this paved median has, the vernacular has become an emergency lane, and I just, I don't know if that's factual or not, so thank you.
Yes, sir. So you want me to talk about the median?
You talk about whatever you want to talk about.
I got four kids.
You want to see pictures?
When we talk about the median, I do know way before I got here, it was called an emergency lane, and I would assume that probably came around because it was a very large, very wide median. It looked and appeared as though it was something meant for emergency vehicles, and quite often we would use it. The state law, no matter whether you have a median or not, dictates that any vehicle must yield to the furthest point to the right when an emergency vehicle is approaching behind. So even when they're using that emergency lane, vehicles still should have moved to the side. I call it emergency lane, because it's what I'm used to, but it's just a median. And if, the benefit I see in a median, if we talked about that, would be that when you have a collision, you can move vehicles around the collision, assuming it's a disabled vehicle that we can't move. If we have a vehicle that's a rear end and everything's functionable and we can move it, for us as police officers, we want to get it off the bridge, because it's much safer to work a collision, both for us and for the individuals involved and the other motoring traffic, we would move it off the bridge. If they're disabled or a driver is taken from the scene by emergency medical services or something like that, then we would have to direct traffic around it. A center median gives us that avenue to do that without putting a vehicle into a bicycle or pedestrian lane, and that was, that's where I see the benefit in a center median for us. And it does give that room for a vehicle to get through in an emergency fashion. Did I answer what you were asking, sir?
You did. Thank you. Chief O? Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just to follow up on that?
Yes, ma'am.
But without that center median in Concept 5 in particular, you can, there is, it is still possible, if there's an accident inbound, for you all to get emergency vehicles around, correct?
I would never say it's not possible. To get around, you're relying on the traffic that's going outbound to move out of the way, because they're going to have to go into those incoming lanes. way, because they're going to have to go into those incoming lanes. We're going to do anything to avoid putting a vehicle in a bicycle or pedestrian lane. The moment we put one in that lane and somebody steps into a lane of traffic, or they ride their bike into a lane of traffic and they are struck by a vehicle, the city is liable because we opened the door for that. And so we would do anything in our power to eliminate that option of putting a vehicle into that bicycle or pedestrian lane. So we would have to close an incoming lane, or an outgoing lane, I'm sorry, for them to get passed. It can be done. If a collision happens incoming, we can shut down one of those two lanes that are exiting. The downside to that is, we have limited personnel for police officers. Typically, our squads are about three to four officers. It's going to take three of them to direct the traffic around one of those collisions, two to direct and one to work the collision so we can clear the roadway as quick as possible. But it can be done, yes.
So that's, so that's what you would do? So, but earlier you said if, that the state law is that if I'm driving down any road and there's an emergency vehicle behind me, I'm supposed to move to the right?
Correct.
So that is...
It would not be into the pedestrian lane. You wouldn't, you wouldn't function somebody, a vehicle moving into a pedestrian, the furthest they can get to the right is into that little area that's got the lines over it. We can't put them into a pedestrian lane.
So I'm not, when I'm driving and there's an emergency vehicle behind me, I'm not supposed to go all the way to the edge of the bridge?
Ideally, no, you're not supposed to go into one. That is where the downside comes of having a pedestrian lane on the side in general. It doesn't matter what road it's on. State law dictates you go as far to the right as you can, but I would not want vehicles turning into those lanes, because it opens the door for issues. So if, if we're looking inbound and that's the avenue, then we're placing everybody at jeopardy if everybody has to pull into the bicycle and pedestrian lane.
Chief, if you, whether you have a middle lane or two lanes out, I mean, your staff's, or is your staff having direct traffic on that bridge either way?
Yes, sir. Even the way it's built now, we direct traffic in some fashion. If we have personnel, then we try to find avenues to work around that collision in its current makeup. We would do the same if it had two lanes going out and one coming in. If it had a center median, we'd still would try to use personnel to direct traffic. It helps and it keeps it safer when we have that. It takes less personnel when you have that center median than it would the two going out. Again, doesn't mean we can't do it, we can, just takes more personnel.
Got it.
So, you know, when we have an accident on the bridge, I mean, or on the connector, Chief Cornet, you know, our staffs will be up there together, working together, so we see a lot of the same things. We experience everything, you know, pretty much at the same time. The difference is, they're focused on the traffic management piece, and we're focused on, let's, you know, remove the hazard, is there a patient, and mitigate, and then move on. So we try to limit our exposure in the roadway wherever we are, whether it's the connector or on any of our surface streets, because we know that secondary collisions can happen, motorists are distracted, and so for safety of our firefighters, and if we're dealing with patients, we want to get off to a safe area. Just like Chief Cornet mentioned, they want to work that accident scene, if they're able, you know, off the connector. So all the designs have their merits. SCDOTs, you know, work pretty diligently to vet all those. As a fire department, we can work with any of those concepts. There's not one of them to us that is like, oh, this is the perfect one for everybody, because we have so many stakeholders, whether it's fire, EMS, pedestrians, cyclists, you know, the motorists. So we will be able to work around any of those concepts with our police department. Ideally, because just how we are trained and how we operate, we do prefer a larger center, center median as a fire department, because as Chief Cornet mentioned, you're taught, you know, to pull over to the right. Our drivers, you know, are taught to slowly migrate to the left so they can make their way through traffic. And when an emergency vehicle is pulled over onto the right, then, you know, we are taught as citizens of, you know, state of South Carolina, to move over to the left to give that officer or whoever's working that incident that space as you drive by, as you reduce your speed and pass to the left. So with all those things taken into consideration, it's a beautiful stretch of roadway, it's a phenomenal piece of our infrastructure, so it's very, very majestic when you get up there with drivers who are distracted on their phones or looking at the view. We like having that additional, you know, center, center buffer if somebody starts to travel. But again, we can work with any of those, any of those designs. And everything Chief Cornet mentioned, you know, pretty much, you know, wraps it up, because as public safety professionals, we both see the same challenges and the same experiences.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Experts, if you will, just try to pull into the memory banks here a little bit on this. We've had this restriped for some period of time now, the existing configuration that we have. Have there been difficulties in making rescues or getting to the accident scene at any time on the, on the connector that's, that's really been a major problem for you in any way? And I guess the other, second part of the question is, how do you feel that by lowering the speed limit the way that that was done, to what, 45 now? How is that working out in your estimation?
I can give you, we pulled our data and we could not trend it, we didn't see anything that was pointing to an increase in severity of accidents or increase in accidents since the connector restriping, when we went back in our record management system to look at all our, look at our data. And I think one thing that, you know, Mr. Perry, you know, what Rob mentioned was the reduction in speed, you know, reduction in the amount of vehicles, all those things, you know, help with, with what we're trying to accomplish to make a safe roadway. So just, anecdotally, just looking at it from, you know, 30,000-foot view from when we looked at our data, the reduction in speed probably paid, you know, played a big part in it. That's just my assumption as a non-traffic professional. But speed, you know, the higher rates of speed, the less time you have as a driver to, to react. So I think that's very crucial and very key, and maybe, maybe even more important than the striping in a lot of ways. So the reduction in speed, I think, has been beneficial, but looking at our data, we haven't seen an increase. It's been flat since the restriping, you know, prior and then after, from a fire department perspective. But Chief Cornet could speak to his, his part better with his data that he looked at.
Yeah.
I'm much shorter. We saw, when we looked at our collisions while they went up slightly island-wide, we saw a reduction after the striping on the connector in general. As far as working collisions, we've not had any issues that I'm aware of. There was one, one incident where it was just easier for the responding medical service to come up the opposite lane due to the traffic backup behind the collision, and we shut down that traffic to get there. One thing I will tell you, it doesn't matter what you do, it doesn't matter how that thing looks, it doesn't matter if there are trees on there, it doesn't matter what. Our job is safety and protection of people. So we will do whatever it takes in a situation where somebody's out there that needs help. We're going to get resources to them, even if we have to shut it down on both sides, we will do whatever it takes to get people the help they need. Doesn't matter how you configure it, doesn't matter what you do. I promise you, we're committed to life safety, and we're going to put everything we can to get that safety and those resources of the people who need it. Speed is a problem statewide, nationwide, so I like a reduction in speed, because we see a lot of collisions related to speed just statewide that result from speed. And so I don't have any objection to the lowering the way they did, I think that was a good idea.
Kate?
Thank you.
Speaking of the accidents that have happened, you know, since the restriping, what is the procedure as it is right now when there's an accident?
The same thing that would be with 5 essentially, is we will shut down traffic if we have to. If we can direct it around, if we can find a way to, we'll find that hole and move it. But there have been times where we just stop all traffic until we can move the collision. It's really whatever we can do to create a safe environment for us to work and for the people who have been involved in the collision. So typically, we try, it doesn't matter how it is, we're going to try to find a way to move traffic, because I've realized, people, people want to either get on the island or they want to get off the island, and I want to do what I can to help you, but my first priority is not the traffic. My first priority is the collision and the safety of that area. So if we can find a hole, we find a hole. If we can't, everybody just get comfortable and get a Snickers.
And one, and one more, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
When the shooting happened, would it have been helpful to get people off the island faster?
I think...
From a police department standpoint?
It certainly would have been to get people off the island to clear them, but I will tell you, when we looked at that, it was not just the connector striping, it was, there was a collision on the other side of the connector, and then it was just the sheer volume of vehicles getting into the Mount Pleasant side. We had Mount Pleasant police officers manning traffic signals at rifle range and Hungry Neck, all the way up to 17, to try to alleviate that. There was just so much traffic. Of course, if we could have got it off faster, it would have been great, but we were doing everything in our power at that point to get them off as quick as we could, and we were still dealing with traffic.
Chief, real quick, having conversations with residents, you know, if you look at option five and having a second lane off, you know, concerned about that second lane off becoming a passing lane, if you will, for lack of a better term. What's our, I know we only control the bridge up to a certain point, but the ability to patrol that bridge for speeding, I mean, again, it almost doesn't matter what paint's on the ground. I mean, what's your thoughts around that?
We patrol the connector now. It actually, in reality, should be the safest bridge in the area, because it's, we have jurisdiction up into the flag, and Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant has jurisdiction up into where asphalt meets the concrete, and then county has the rest. However, we have an agreement with Charleston County that gives all three municipalities, or both municipalities and the county, jurisdiction over the entire bridge, so we, with that agreement, can enforce all the way up to where concrete meets asphalt. And Mount Pleasant can enforce all the way up to the flagpole. So you've got three different jurisdictions. If you throw highway in there, because they're just wandering out this way, I mean, it should be the safest bridge in the state with all those jurisdictions on it. But we do, we do. Will you have people passing in the peak season? I highly doubt it, because they're in the same mode as everybody else, they're stuck in traffic trying to leave. In the off-season, would it be something that could be the case? Certainly, and I think that would be a great new endeavor if we chose that route for our new traffic unit to get out there and make friends.
Yeah. I think if we went down that path, I mean, if option five winds up being the path, I mean, I think that is going to be something that we'd need to keep top of mind personally to make sure that doesn't become a reality.
Yes, sir.
Passing lane. Jennifer, anything you want to opine? Just tell us what to do, Jennifer. You know what I'm saying?
I don't really have anything additional, because I think it's all been brought up by either DOT or the safety officers. It's, when choosing through an alternative, it's really going to depend on what the ends look like and what the center looks like is important, and it's what you're, what are you interested in? You know, the two lanes out will add more capacity, but they have to be tied into the intersections on the Mount Pleasant side and at Palm Boulevard correctly, but you really need to do that for all of the alternatives. So it really comes down to the operations on each end and how that, and that works, and that will help process folks through and everything, and then, you know, they're all very, you know, bicycle and pedestrian being on the bridge is an important aspect of complete streets and, and being able to have that, that ability. And so how, you know, it's, it's handled generally similarly throughout with, without, with just having the, the distance between the lanes and then where the pedestrians would be. But it's really tying it in, and then, you know, there's a couple of things in the RK and K report of, you know, smaller measures to kind of help with people being aware of the traffic ahead of them and, and signs and then all that as well. So really looking at letting, letting, whichever alternative selected, letting the design professionals really look at it and make it the best that it can for, for that design, but really partnering with Mount Pleasant on the Mount Pleasant side, and then doing weekend on, on the Isle of Palm side as well to kind of help facilitate the traffic flow as well, and, and, you know, pedestrian and vehicular.
Yeah. And I guess, Rob, to that comment, you know, some of the work left to be done is structural engineering work on both sides, to Jennifer's point, because it's not a restriping essentially. I mean, this time we are taking a step back, like we asked you to do, come with alternatives, and then let's engineer both sides to make sure we can get the flow.
That's correct. This is when the traffic engineer really kicks in, and will do the counts and the modeling, and that's where you decide turn lanes, where they need to go, what the length of storage is, whether it needs to be a double left or a single left. That's all the things that our traffic engineering propeller heads do on a daily basis, once we get the preferred alternative, to work out the dirty details, right? A couple of other things I forgot to hit on, I attended the, the beach season traffic meeting that you hosted, thank you so much for hosting that. We've also, we know now that, that the media down here really pushes using 501 and ITS cameras, I think y'all manage a few, and we've offered to take over management, I think of one on the Mount Pleasant side, put one up on, on Ben Sari Boulevard to watch the Ben Sari Bridge opening, because when that thing opens, it affects them and it affects y'all and it affects Mount Pleasant, and maybe put some more cameras around the Isle of Ponds, right away we own, that would help in traffic management. And then the other thing I forgot to bring up was Palm Boulevard. Another thing that we'd, we'd offer to study was how to balance pedestrian bicyclists, parking, golf carts on Palm better. So probably in the next couple of months, I'll be coming back to meet with, with Desiree and staff to get those options similarly to what we did with the connector, but we want to make sure also that we can, we can classify what those impacts could be, right? Because any option's going to have trade-offs, because there's only so much space and there's already things on Palm Boulevard, so we want y'all to have the information to help make an informed decision with that.
And Rob, you see that process being similar, coming back with some number of options in public comment period, or what does that look like?
We'll definitely bring options to you, and then we'll, we'll work it out with you, whether you want to go that far or not. I don't, I don't want to sound, we're going to put something out through a California farm ever again on a Friday, if I can help it, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. But, but again, some number of options on Palm Boulevard layout.
Absolutely, it'll be multiple.
With the 100 feet of right-of-way that we have there.
That's right, feet on center.
Can you say which section of Palm Boulevard you're talking about?
It's, what, 21st to 41st, that, that section, that 20 blocks. Are there any other questions, me or?
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I think, thank you very much for doing this study. The Palm Boulevard study will be separate from the connector, right? So we can proceed with the connector.
That's correct. I just felt like I was already here, some of y'all might have had questions, I might have just given you an update on that.
Trying to get it. And I would like to also suggest, I think as I did before, that if there are two stages to the connector improvements, I know there's, it's easier to, as we saw a couple of years ago, it's, it's easier to restripe the connector than it is to make intersection, changes in the intersection configurations. So we would ask that what appears to be feasible to do in a first stage would be wonderful for us, because just one of the things that we, the chief mentioned that accidents had gone up on the bridge, I would like to say, first of all, they went from like 10 accidents a year to 14 accidents a year. Talk about being safe, it is the safest road. But I, I went back and checked with the traffic volumes that we record on the connector, traffic went up too. So we're pretty much staying, you know, as constant with the, the accident rate on the bridge. But the traffic is saying that we get volumes on that road of 20,000 vehicles a day, and the capacity of a two-lane road is about 20,000 to 24,000 vehicles a day. And this happens for five months of the year, not just on those busy weekends, but we process more traffic on that road than I could have imagined ever. And so the improvements that we're making now is, we always have to consider safety when we're doing it, but we're, we're approaching gridlock right now with the conditions out there and with the road, with the volumes that we are recording on the road. And if anybody wants to check, they're on the South Carolina DOT website. They record them by hour, by day, by month, by year, in both, one direction, both directions, however you want it. So, thank you for that.
And I guess, Rob, one last one, sorry, this is my last coupon, man, I promise. Do you think that, so that bridge was opened in 92-ish timeframe, I mean, what's the life of a bridge like that, and what would be, so I'll stop there first.
No, it's a great question. It's probably about 75 years is what we shoot for, for our bridges. You know, our smaller H10 bridges are around 60 years, but yeah, if you're around when the Ravenel was being built, I think 75 to 100, what we were shooting for that and 75 for the connector.
Okay. We got a while, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
93, yeah. Okay. Anything else for Rob or Jennifer?
October 93.
October 93, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we've got a resolution later that we'll put together for SCDOT to Rob and Secretary Hall's request to pick an option, but just to close that out, this whole conversation, I would entertain a motion as we look at options, and we've heard all these conversations, all my questions tonight. all my questions tonight, so does anybody have?
Sure. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt option five for the connector.
Second.
Amy, do you know if either one of them have questions they want to ask or they're here? John, Kevin, can you all hear? And do you have questions?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yes. No, I don't have any further questions.
So we have a motion on the floor for concept five?
Correct.
Is there any, any more discussion or no?
Yes, I mean, we've, we've got a motion and a second, so we're open for discussion at this point. Yeah, we're in discussion now.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I just want to say, this is a huge decision, one that shouldn't be based on three plus or minus months per year traffic. I'm supporting concept three. As I mentioned before, I was against concept five, which has two lanes leaving the island, which is not solving a problem. Two lanes leaving will only step up, you know, both lanes since the inches down on one lane until improvements are made in, on the Mount Pleasant side. Excuse me. I thought I heard that maybe some restructuring's been done. I've, I've been gone for a couple of months, so if that's been done and that helps, that's great, but still road improvements have to be done. You know, when the connector was built, it allowed for the middle lane for emergencies, which was a great decision. You know, before then, we only had the Ben Sawyer. We had no emergency way on or off the island. So I would rather an emergency lane for our residents and visitors instead of tying up most of the lanes to help day trippers get off the island, including helping with terrible situations that we just experienced. Remember, we still have traffic coming back on the island. So I, I just wanted to just make my support for concept three. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. John, anything from your view? Any questions or further discussion? John, you there? Anything?
Yeah, I'm here. You know, I guess we're finding ourselves trying to manage a balance again. We started down this path, I, I was involved with some discussions with DOT at the time to do two things. One is increase the flow across the bridge to, to alleviate traffic situations that we see on the island, but also with a mind for safety. And I think we saw that in the results, it came back in the survey actually as well, when residents put those two things that they're, they're number one and number two concerns with the bridge. If we look at it through the lens of just one or the other, if we look at it obviously through the lens of safety, we wouldn't have any traffic across the bridge and we'd just use it for emergency access. Of course, that doesn't solve the other issue, which is traffic. And if we look at it just from traffic, we have four lanes of traffic going across. So I think the two lanes off and the one lane on, again, is a balance that achieves both of those. I think it's, we've heard that through the experts, I think we've heard that through the residents, and that's why I'm, I'm in favor of that option.
Thank you, John. Blair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As this council knows, I've spoken many a ti, many times about the reasons this council should support option three for the connector, along with demanding that a hard barrier be placed between the traffic and the pedestrian bicycle lane. This is the option our Public Safety Committee recommended to be adopted by council. The basis for recommending option three with a hard barrier comes from our first responders, all of which believe option three is the safest choice. I've been accused of lying and misrepresenting the position of our first responders by members of this council. They simply don't want to hear the truth. The truth is, I sat down with both our police chief and our fire chief. I looked him in the eye, and I asked him, what would you do if this was your decision? I called our fast, our past fire chief in the mountains of North Carolina and asked the same question. I put the question to multiple heads of other law enforcement departments in the Tri-County area. All of them, to a person, said the same thing. An emergency lane is the safest, best option, all of them. Our fire chief went so far as to say that sending someone to change the flag on the connector gave him pause because it is currently so unsafe. Those are the facts and the truth of the matter. Of course, when asked if they could make any other option work, they said that they will make it work. That's their job, to put themselves in harm's way so the rest of, so the rest of us will be safe. Don't we owe it to each and every first responder to make their job as safe as possible? But those are facts. Doesn't seem we're interested in facts. Political expediency is what we all care about. So let me give you the politically expedient reason option three is the only real option. 20-plus years ago, Sullivan's Island was faced with a similar choice. Do they block SCDOT from removing the drawbridge for a fixed span bridge like our connector? Or do they take the candy? Do they take the fixed span bridge? After much debate, Sullivan's Island blocked a fixed span bridge because it would make it easier to access the island. The easier it is to access, the more people will come, the more cars, more traffic, more load on already overloaded infrastructure. They saw that this is exactly what happened to the Isle of Palms when our connector opened. If we add two lanes off, that is exactly what will happen again. More cars, more traffic, more people, more load on our first responders, more chaos on our beaches and in our public parking areas. If you won't vote for option three for the right reasons, then vote for option three for the politically expedient reason. I implore every member of council to vote for the option recommended by our safety committee and our first responders. Please vote for option three.
Thank you. Rusty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote for option five. You know, I've been here for a long time, 40 years or so, and I've seen a lot of traffic coming on off this island before we even had the connector. And I understand fully why Sullivan's Island did what they did, and, and don't blame them for doing what they did also. I, I would say this, I think in terms of, if we go with option five and there's two lanes off, for me, that's a plus. I think the faster we can get traffic off of this island, particularly if it's accommodated on the other end, the Mount Pleasant end, through traffic lights and through road configuration, I'm all for that. You know, one lane on, it's going to be slow getting, getting on and off this island anyway. Traffic is not going to decrease in the future. The way the population's growing throughout the Tri-County region, Mount Pleasant, we're going to always be stuck with traffic issues and traffic problems. What I would like to see is that, you know, when we have, hopefully, two lanes going off of this island, that we would see a situation when that sudden thunderstorm comes up that people could get off just a little bit quicker. And I also think that when, when we have busy beach weekends, people try to get out here all at once, pretty much. So that one lane, they're going to be, they're going to be stuck at, all the way, you know, all the way back to Highway 17, basically trying to get on. But then people in the afternoon, unless we have a thunderstorm and everybody tries to leave at once, it's more staggered. They don't all leave at the same time. So I think it would just help traffic flow getting off of this island during the high season on those busy summer weekends. So I'm for option five, and I'm really, I think, when we look at the survey that, that was taken and the amount of participation in that survey, there's no doubt in my mind that the people who responded to that survey are in favor of option five as well. Thank you.
And Rob, I guess just one last thing to, you know, or Blair, to your comment, you know, regardless of which option we put on a resolution tonight, I mean, there's a lot of work left to be done. And I, maybe one last question for you, Rob. If we, whether it's option three, option five, whichever one it is, if we go down a path and you guys go do your engineering work and come back to us and say, three, four, or five doesn't work for whatever reason, cost or connectivity, or Jennifer, your comment, whatever else needs to happen on either side of the bridge, I mean, kind of, kind of walk us through that a little bit. So I know you got to go away and do some construction drawings and, and make sure all the engineering works and the flow works, but kind of talk through.
No, we'll continue to have dialogue no matter what, because again, I, I think you need to know if we are running into right-of-way or utilities. Now, you know, if there are federal funds that are used to, to fund this as opposed to state, we've got to follow National Environmental Policy Act. So we, we would do an environmental document, we'd do some public meetings, again, before we started purchasing right-of-way, and the environmental document needed to be done before you purchase right-of-way. So I think that was to, to Councilwoman Anderson's point, that, you know, it could take some time, depending on what we get into, once we get into full-blown design. But no, this, there will be coordination with both the City of Isle of Palms and the town of Mount Pleasant, if, if we move forward with something.
Scott?
No, I was just going to reiterate, I, I've been writing about, and I'm in support of option five. I think that to, if we look at the traffic studies, we've got something like 8 million crossings across the connector each year, and that's growing. We may have one lane in, we're going to have two lanes out. I'm not sure that the one lane in is going to attract more people, we're just going to be getting people off the island quicker. I think with the safety mitigation that we have with the paramedics and also with the, what I heard from the public safety folks is that they can work with any option. I don't think we're going to get another opportunity to alleviate traffic within the neighborhoods or off the island, again, like we have today. So I am in full favor of option five.
We've got a motion and a second. Nicole, let's do a roll call vote on this, and if you want to start with folks on the phone, just to make it a little bit easier possibly.
Absolutely. Councilor Begosian?
Aye.
The motion on the, the motion on the floor is for option five?
Option five.
Yes. So is your vote yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay. Councilmember Popsen?
Nicole, is that many?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Nay.
Nay, okay.
Nay.
Councilmember Han?
Nay.
Councilmember Myers?
Yea.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yea.
We got to go back to aye.
Yeah.
You started having a little bit too hard for that. Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
Oh, Councilman Streitman?
Aye.
And Mayor Pounds, you said aye?
Aye, yep.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Rob and Jennifer?
Mr. Mayor, may feel redundant, but I think it's important that we consider another motion, and then that motion would be, I would like for council to adopt option three. I'd like to have it on the record from each council member, if there are second, if there is a second.
Second.
Motion is second.
Okay.
Conversations.
Yes. So, I don't, I don't understand how, I mean, we can't, or maybe we can. We couldn't vote to propose both. I mean, I think that, that the DOT has asked for a one-way or the other, right? I mean, I don't think the DOT has asked for anything.
What?
Yeah. Yeah, SCOD has asked for a resolution or direction of some type, Rob, not to put words in your mouth, but.
I just want to know where everyone stands on, on the other options. People could put a motion forward for option one or two, or four, but my motion is option three. We have a second.
Can I ask for, I'm, I'm just confused, because for everything we vote on, would we always vote on the alter, bring up a vote for the alternative since the one option has already passed? I think it's evident that we didn't vote for option three. Can I ask maybe, is this traditional, Mac, or?
No, I mean, it seems a little super flurries to me. I mean, it's, we know that the other, the four that voted no are for option three.
We don't know that.
Well, maybe you're the only one that hasn't said it, I think.
I don't have to say anything. All right.
No, you don't.
So we've got a motion and a second. Let's roll call it. Start on the phone, again, Nicole, if you don't mind. John and Kevin, do you get that? There's a, a motion, it was seconded?
Yes, sir.
To support option three.
Okay.
All right. Makes no sense to me, I would vote on that, but if we do, we do.
Call for them.
Councilor Begosian, your vote for this option three?
Nay.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Nay.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Streitman?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Nay.
Councilmember Pierce?
Nay.
Mayor Pounds?
Nay.
Motion fails?
Thank you.
Thank you for the consideration.
Absolutely. Rob and Jennifer, thank you all for the work and for the follow-up, and Rob will expect you back in short order on, to continue conversations on Palm Boulevard. Thank you for your efforts, yep. Next item is new business. Item A is discussion and consideration of recommendations from the Public Safety Committee to enhance surveillance and safety on the beach. You recall that we have asked our staff and our public safety folks to go to our Public Safety Committee two weeks ago, I guess, Jimmy and others. There's a list in your packet. Chief Cornet, I don't know if you want to run through some of those and kind of talk, talk through them, or where you would like to take our conversation. You keep going to the back of the room, you just.
It's a good view from back there. So, assuming that everybody had a chance to watch the Public Safety Committee, are you just wanting me to go through the recommendations that we as a staff made?
I think so. You know, and I, yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. So one of these, the first one was when we started looking at our other beach communities, we are one of the few that do not have an ordinance to require a permit for large gatherings on public property or, including the beach or beach access paths. And that was one of the recommendations that we put forth, which is on the agenda later on, and it has a, a very low cost for us, and would be that low-hanging fruit, and something easy for us to enforce as well. The second that we listed was a K-9 user, unit. That's enhanced efforts for crime prevention, detection, apprehension, and officer safety in community services. We used K-9s in the response to the event, both to help with article search on the beach. And for those of you that aren't aware, an article search is where you could put a dog, a police working dog, and they can use their, their sense of smell, which is much, much better than ours, and they can find an item that has recently been discarded, such as if they threw a gun or they threw other evidence down. We could use that, that dog to find that. They also have dogs that are trained for finding weapons, guns, and casings, and we did use K-9 to assist us with that on the beach when we were securing our evidence. There are also dogs that we use for lots of different things, and, and to include narcotics or apprehension. What I'm recommending is a K-9 unit that can be used for finding and alerting on those items, such as guns and narcotics, and used for article searches. I think that is a, a great asset for us, and sometimes can be a preventative. I know a lot of people see it and they think it's a reactive, but if you can find the weapon before it's used on something, or you can find fentanyl before it's ingested, we can save lives with those things. And so I think it's, it's not just reactive, it has a reactive purpose as well, but it is also a preventative tool. You, do you have the cost for these? Do you want me to go over kind of how, what we're looking at?
We do, it's in the packet, yep. That's all right. Thank you.
So roughly with the, with the K-9, you'd be looking at 18,000 to 20,000, and that's a rough cost, right there. It, it would be one of the few things that has a yearly cost associated with it, but it's relatively low. We had a police working dog at my old department, I was one of the ones that brought that onboard, and I think those numbers are pretty accurate.
Could that be, what's the timeframe for that, for the K-9?
Well, we actually had an officer presented this as a, as a recommendation part of their field training here recently, so we've done a lot of the homework, and we've already, because I've worked with K-9s in my previous career, we've got a lot of the connections already. Not my previous career, I'm still a police officer. My previous, I hope I'm still a police officer. In my previous departments, I've worked with K-9s, both when I was working gangs and narcotics and as a chief, so I've already got a lot of the connections built in with So I've already got a lot of the connections built in with the, the different companies. So these are something that we could move quickly on. The longest portion of a K-9 would be the certification. But sometimes you can buy these dogs already certified, and then you've got a training course where the handler gets to know the dog, because what you're looking for from the dog is a change in behavior. And so that officer has to learn that change of behavior, and they learn one another. That's going to be your longest one. I would say within six months, that would be operational. I'm going much longer than I think it would be, but I think that would be fair to, to say that. Another thing we recommended is a mobile surveillance tower. And that would be, you've probably seen them at these big events when you go to them, and it's, it's got a little stand and it raises up, and it's just like a metal building that somebody can stand inside of and they can see things. It's got cameras attached to it. That is rather pricey, and that is about $140,000. I would recommend that if we chose to go forward with that, that we would pursue a grant to do that. And I've already asked our personnel, our grant writing officer, to look at that and see what grants he believes that we would qualify for. He's been very successful with grants in the past, so we'll tap into his resources. There's a smaller version that is $25,000. It is specifically a camera. It's basically a pole that rises up. You tow this out to the area where you're having the issue, you rise a camera, it's going to work off of a cradle point from one of your cell towers or a cell SIM card, and then we can get the video and review it from there live. Adding security cameras along beach access paths, this is one of the things we've learned while we were down there looking at this. We are, we have a few places that I think additional cameras would be useful. One would be at 14th and Ocean. It's one of the few points on Ocean Boulevard where we don't have a camera. And so we'd want to add one there. And then adding each beach access path a camera to let us view. We have it on the main one that goes down by the restrooms. We've already got a camera there. We'd want to add them to the other ones that we control, as well as maybe speaking with the property management at Sea cabins to add some at our cost on the pier, because that seems to be a gathering location. It's where a lot of the people gather, both, on both sides, from County Park Inn, from, coming from just the front beach in general. Another recommendation would be similar to the recommendation that I made last year after the Memorial Day incident, to put an officer on one of the task force with the FBI. And that would give us the ability, if you were there, a lot of our, we had the Joint Terrorism Task Force respond, we had the Violent Crimes Task Force from the FBI respond. And with those, they'd bring a lot of personnel and a lot of tools that we don't necessarily have, to include analysts. And they're still working with us diligently on this case. And I think this would be an opportunity where we can get in front of it, and it would be able to use those analysts to plan for these things prior to and maybe catch them before they're an issue. And that's, that is zero cost to the city to put them on there. Any overtime that is accrued as a result of working a case is actually reimbursed to the city from the FBI. A drone helipad, to, what that is, it sounds, it sounds interesting, but it's just, it's a small little box that you put on top of the public safety building, and from a desktop, you can deploy the drone and have set patterns in there where it can view. We have to get, part of the cost with it, which you see in there is 115,000, that's actually lower, speaking with them today, it's going to be about $84,000. And with that, it includes getting the special permits from the FAA to allow us to write, to operate the drone without a forward observer, so that it can be operated from the desktop. The benefit of this is, what we saw on April 7th was that our drone operators were on the beach, and I certainly was not, was not sending them back to the police department to get the drone to put it up. And this would be the ability to use our non-sworn personnel who were there already to deploy that drone. And I think also has a lot of benefit, not only to law enforcement, but to fire as well, because they could deploy it for fire response, in their views, hurricane response, if we're looking at the, the way that the beach has been affected by a storm. So it has a lot of opportunities outside of this. One that we don't really have a cost on right now.
Chief, can I ask a quick question? This is more curiosity. What's the range on a drone like that?
They said they could cover the entire island. What we look at, it'd give us almost an hour of a battery to operate, bringing it in and back and forth. And once it lands, it comes back and lands in that helipad, it's, it's actually a charging port as well, so it starts charging at the moment it's, it's in there. And it's, it's, right now, we have to go get our box, open our box up, get the sand net out, set it down, turn it on, call in, say we're running our flight, and deploy. This would be a much faster opportunity to deploy it at the touch of a button.
What's the speed of one of those drones?
I'm not sure, sir. This, I've got a couple of drone guys that think they just sleep about drones. I don't know. They love drones. I, it is definitely not my world, but I would tell you, they are, the other benefits of this company is, the company that we currently have is a foreign-made product, and a lot of states are actually starting to ban the use of these drones. And so this is an American-made drone. It's one of the few companies that's actually American-made that is not being banned. So that was the other reason of looking at this one. The other initiative would be to encourage and incentivize police officers to obtain EMT certification. And that is based off of, we have one now that has been doing that for years, but that's based off of the response to the incident. I had officers, multiple officers, that were applying direct pressure, packing wounds, and helping individuals who had been shot and injured on the beach, and helping them get into the back of a Polaris to get them off the beach, simply in a spot that was way too chaotic and not safe enough for our fire personnel to respond to the beach. But it gave them that opportunity to start rendering aid, and it just kind of opened our eyes that we need to better equip and better train. If they had that equipment and they already had EMT equipment on the Polaris with them, they could have done even more than they did. And then we still, we're not trying to be paramedics, we're not trying to take the job of the firefighters. I am 100% capable hands of the fire department. I trust them with my life when it comes to medical, and I would stand by that for sure. I'm not trying to take their job. If something happens to me, I want them to work on me. But we don't have a price on that yet. We're trying to look at what that would cost, and I think limiting the number of personnel in the police department to have that opportunity, enough that we know we've got them wherever our resources are, but not trying to get every police officer to, to get extra money just to be an EMT type of thing. The other thing that we talked about was a prisoner transport van. And when we get these, these large groups, which we've had before, sometimes when we arrest multiple people, it takes multiple cars to take them to the jail, which reduces our staff. And so we looked at a transport van, they're brand-new, they're about $80,000 to be fully equipped, upfitted and everything. However, on a whim last week, I asked our team to reach out to South Carolina State Surplus, and they currently have two sitting there right now that are used, with 30,000 miles on them. They were used by the federal government, so they're in really good condition. I actually stopped by while I was in Columbia yesterday and looked at them. They're both operational, and we can buy those for $38,000. So half the price. And it's something we're not going to drive every day, but something that could be very beneficial. The downside to that is, we don't have a lot of time, because they won't hold those for us for very long. But that is an option that's currently available right now to get a transport van. What we will do differently is have booking stations, where if we're arresting people, they're being booked in, the paperwork's being done, and they can be placed in a transport van and transported to jail as a group, as opposed to sending multiple vehicles at one time.
Chief, how much time do you think we have?
A week?
A week?
Ish. Yes, sir, it's not a lot. I've asked them to hold it as long as they can. They can't promise me anything. I was shocked to see how fast they go. They have three, and one's already been bought by the prison, and the other two are being looked at.
We can. I mean, finish your list, and I've got a suggestion on where I'd like to take this conversation, just see reaction and hear from public safety chair and others.
In, in looking ahead at this thing, I spoke, we spoke with Debbie earlier, we had budgeted for two parking romp or license plate readers that were specific to parking.
Yeah.
It don't work for what we would be looking for with our license plate reader. That's all they could do. And we budgeted $120,000, and we still have about $55,000 left in that account. And I would assume that we would not be looking to move forward with those. But that would, just throwing that out as an option, not saying that's where we're going, but I've done my homework to make sure the money was there and available now. And the last thing I wanted to hit on was the license plate reader. It's already in the budget for next year. We, if you were with us on that Saturday speaking with the sheriff, we've been talking with her, some of our contacts with the LPR, we might be able to get it a little bit early and just start paying in July. I can't guarantee that, but we're working to see if we can secure that before the new budget year starts, and then the cost will just kind of pick up at that point. That's my list, unless you have questions.
Just to follow up, of course, we'd have to, on the prisoner transport bus or van, whatever it is, we'd have to have some small costs involved with decals and things like that, correct?
The only thing we would have to do would be decals. The lights are already in it, the siren is already in it, everything is functional, turns on and it runs. I was sitting in it yesterday.
I think that would be a really good deterrent if we felt like something was coming, is park that thing down in the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Right? So we're waiting. Come on in.
We could do that with our Humvee right now, too, just for a show.
A little bit caution with that part, but yes, sir.
So Jimmy, I know y'all have had this conversation at public safety, but instead of us going through each one of these and saying yes, no, yes, no, I think it would behoove us to just approve a dollar amount, pick a number, 150, 200,000, let chief prioritize and his staff prioritize what they want to spend it on and go from there.
I think maybe we should ask.
Can I ask a question on, it looks to me like the, you're talking about maybe going for a grant on the, on the one, the tower. What do the, what do the others kind of all add up to, if it was a?
I have not sat there and added them all together, but I would, our priority, in my opinion, would be the cameras. I think that is probably the most important part. The transport van, and I think the drone. Ordinance is my first priority. Let me clarify that, but that has no cost to you. The ordinance is my first priority. Then I would say the cameras, transport van, and the drone, and the Joint Terrorism Task Force would be one of my next.
Somebody just add that up real quick and.
Yeah, and chief, when you say cameras, does that include the tower?
No, sir. That is specific to our camera infrastructure that we already have, just adding additional cameras.
Got it.
Should we separate out the first one, since it's, there's no cost, and vote on that separately?
We're going to vote on that.
We've got to come, trying to figure out a number right now.
But there, because there's no cost. The first one has no cost at all.
There's no cost to number one or number five.
But, and I think what I, this seems to like ballpark around 200, but I think you said there's 55 sitting around in one of your other accounts that we might be able to apply, and that the other one is budgeted for next year. We might want to know what that is. That would come off of it as well. We can assume that. And I think maybe we're, it's going to be even a much smaller number.
I think 150,000, I think 150,000 would give them the flexibility to purchase the van, the cameras, and the drone.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 150,000. Second.
And just for the, just for the record, we anticipate end FY '23 budget with a little over $1 million in positive, positive net result.
Desiree, just for clarity on the motion, do you want it to be up to 150,000?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 150,000.
Yes, sir. And this is for immediate spending? This isn't?
Within a week, at least.
Yes, sir.
And my, and just for the record, all of the purchases would follow the city's procurement code? So we, you know, we need to get multiple quotes if there are purchases that are not included in the state contract, in current state contracts. So just for the record, we would follow all procurement code with any purchases.
Chief, I mean, is this a comfortable path for you to say, here's a bucket, go, go figure out what you feel is most important to implement?
Yes, sir. I think this gives us the ability to get our hot items that are going to be important quickly, and get those put in place. And then the others, we can wait for grants and see how we can get those set up.
So that was my next question, was the ones that are going to be for more than just an initial outlier, do we need to do something now to say that we would be willing to fund those in the future, or deal with that when we get there? The only one that I think would behoove us to have a little bit more discussions throughout the Public Safety Committee is the addition of a K-9 unit. That would be one that I would recommend, that we put it on an agenda and we present, a lot of the research has been, you know, prepared so far. The chief even, you know, said conservatively, we're looking at approximately six months before we can implement that. So that would be my recommendation.
Well, and I'm under the understanding we're kind of tabling number three in this package. Is that what I'm hearing, go for the grant?
Yes, sir. I think, I feel comfortable that we can find a grant to fund a good portion, if not all of this.
So not 150s for everything, except.
Because the other thing to keep in mind is the drones, if the drone works the way they're advertising it, we may not need number three.
Okay. Good.
Can I have a question real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Chief, I'm curious, as you looked into the aftermath of the shooting, and these are all great, great ideas you have here, but one of the problems I think I saw was the fact that before, before the actual shootings occurred, giving extra help and police force to the island, and I know there's limitations and other things that may have, that may be in place that is hard for that to happen, but did you talk about that? Is there something that we can do that as we get intelligence or some idea that, you know, something dangerous about to happen? We just don't have enough police force to be able to effectively control the crowds that we have. So when we see something that's going to happen, or potential happen, how do we get extra resources before the incident occurs? It was great after the shootings, we had all the help, you know, we needed. But prior to that, I think it was an issue. So did you talk about that, maybe?
I can, yes, sir. And I think you bring up a good point that I will start with. I think the thing to remember that I don't know that everybody realizes, is our police force is only made up of 22 police officers. And that is 22 police officers to make a full functioning police department that covers 24 hours, seven days a week, to include detectives, livability, and all the other jobs that we're doing. We have 5,000 residents, but on a normal summer day, we can have 20,000 to 30,000 people on the island. Just on a normal summer day, we are severely outnumbered. When you add holidays to it, that could be as high as 50,000 to 60,000 people on the island. Again, staffing is difficult when you have 22, because we have, I can't have half of them on day shift and half of them on night shift. They have to have days off and rotate them. Typically, when you look at it, we wind up with our squads being about four personnel. And that's, that's not a lot. Now, when we know we've got summer days, we bring in extra help, we reach out for our partners, we actually pay off-duty deputies, we pay them at an off-duty rate, which is somewhere around $46 to $50 an hour to come out here. We can't get them to fill those spots all the time. It's a struggle. As far as getting personnel prior to, we found out about this event that morning. We had no warning, other than that morning when we got a phone call from a parent, and as quickly as we could, we reached out to our partners to get assets here. We had Charleston County Sheriff's deputies that were here already. We had 50% of our department sworn personnel were already on the beach. That's 50% of our availability, or available. Because remember, I had one in the academy, I had two in field training, and then I had one on light duty. So that 22 quickly becomes a much smaller number. So 50% was on the beach, and I was on, in the parking lot with others. We, we asked for help as quick as we could. The difference you look at, when we know an event is happening, that Thursday following, when Folly Beach had their event scheduled, we went ahead because we saw last year when an event was scheduled to take place on Folly Beach, and they increased their staffing, they redirected that event towards us. And so we went ahead and prepared that they could come here, and we had police everywhere that Thursday afterwards on this island. And there were, I actually had phone calls criticizing me, because we had police officers And there were, I actually had phone calls criticizing me, because we had police officers here that were everywhere, and quite, quite ugly criticized, criticism coming towards me for that. But we've also prepared, we know we've got May 6th coming. They've already indicated they're going to have an event here, May 6th. And so we've already talked with our friends at every agency we can get here, and I could promise you, there will be a lot of police officers here on May 6th. So if you, go ahead and get mad now. But we will have a lot of police officers here to address that. When we know ahead of time, we, we do staff, and we use those partnerships and those relationships with those agencies so that we're better prepared.
Will we have the van by May 6th?
I hope so. Yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am. I will do everything in my power to.
Kevin, anything from your side?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Chief, thank you very much for your work.
If I could, I do want to take a moment, and I just thank you all for your support. I think this council has been tremendous in a response to an incident that we don't, we don't see often on this beach, or in these communities like this. And I can't brag enough about how responsive and supportive you, as a council, have been. Not every chief can say that. So thank you for what you've done to support us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we thank you, Chief, and Chief, all of areas.
Chief, stay right there, if you don't mind. So our next item is discussion and consideration of hiring Pivot Parking to provide staffing support for parking enforcement for the 2023 beach season. In your package, you've got a revised proposal from Pivot, which is just applicable to this season. You'll recall, when we talked at our workshop earlier this month, we had a full proposal from them to take a lot of the task off the city. Lot of conversations, chief, staff, council members, public safety, and others, and it just was gonna be really hard to pull a full implementation off before season started. So we asked Pivot to come back and say, could you just provide staffing for us? And that's really all it is. A lot of the task that you would get in a full-service model with a Pivot or someone else does not come with the proposal that we have from them. So Debbie, Desiree, Douglas, others had talked and put together a proposal and an analysis on the Pivot proposal as just a staffing model for 2023 compared to us hiring additional BSO personnel for 2023. And again, all this is about, Chief, not to put words in your mouth, but you know, some of its presence, whether it's on the beach, or in parking lots, or up and down Palm Boulevard. You know, well, I'll stop there. Desiree, anything you want to add before we go for further discussion? Or Chief, I'll let you take it, too.
Yeah, I mean, I hope everybody had an opportunity to look at the analysis that we put together that effectually, if, what did I say?
Effectively.
Effectively increases the number of BSOs or parking management attendants that we would have for parking management island-wide. So what we did was, you know, we evaluated what the cost would be for the entire season through October, assuming that we would continue to hire the same number of BSOs that were in the process of hiring, which we typically aim to have 10 beach service officers on the beach. In the past, those same 10 have to respond to beach events, enforcing ordinances on the beach as well as parking. So the idea would be, how can we enhance our presence on the beach and maybe do a better job at enforcing parking violations island-wide? When you look at the analysis, the cost of the staffing proposal, it's roughly a quarter of a million dollars. So you'll see that we assumed that the city would hire additional BSOs. So even if we double the number of BSOs that we have anticipated in the budget, it would still be roughly $137,000 cheaper to the city to do that for the season. Our recommendation is for the city to continue to pursue complete outsourced of parking management for a lot of reasons. We've discussed, discussed that at length at the Public Safety Committee. I just do not think that this sort of hybrid option to hire more people through that arrangement makes financial sense to the city. My recommendation would be that City Council enhances and approves a higher budget for BSOs, and that we pursue a full negotiation with this company to take the entire operations. We've had multiple conversations with the chief and, and the rest of the staff, and we believe that that's, that's the right path, and I can certainly let the chief chime in on that.
Ms. Desiree, Ms. Ferguson pretty much summed it up pretty well. We all agreed. I think, I do want to point out that Pivot does not normally do the recommendation they were, they were offering for us this summer to just give us people. That was not something that they do. They, in the light of our incident and realizing that we need more personnel to help with parking, they, they just reached back and said, hey, we will offer this. And I think that was a, a very good gesture, and we certainly appreciate it. I do think it was rather expensive, and in looking at it and understanding the concerns of rushing into it, if, if it would make everybody feel comfortable to just slowly go into the full contract, and we can, maybe they start this summer, I don't know, it's whenever, however fast they could do it, without rushing them just getting people here, where we're still dealing with collections, we're still dealing with some of the kiosk maintenance, we're still dealing with the, the tickets that are being issued by people that don't work for us. I, I'd rather, I'd feel more comfortable if we gave it all turnkey to them at one point, it didn't kind of piecemeal it, if that makes sense. I think we would function better. I think it would be a better service to our residents and a better service to people that are visiting to just let them just take it all on at one time. But I understand that can't happen tonight. So that was kind of our thought. Now, in full disclosure, I can't, I, I don't know how many BSOs we're gonna be able to get. We, we struggle every year trying to, to recruit up to 10. I know by May 9th, I'll have five. By May 16th, I'll have six. But you know, that's, that's where we're at now. It's, it's a hard spot to fill, because we're typically gathering resources from colleges, and they don't get out until May. And so it'll start to pick up here. But then at the same time with that, if they're in college, we will typically lose them in August to go back to school.
Yeah.
Scott?
Just a couple of comments. I, you know, I want to reiterate, I'm in full support of outsourcing this function, the total function, at some point in time. I think it's also a good move with the staffing for us to take this internal for the season. And if we take this to a vote, what I, and I think you also know my opinion, I, I'm a proponent of RFP in shopping, even if it's a 30, 60, 90 day, just to get options and see what others can do. We've had Pivot come in and give us a present, presentation and some nice PowerPoint slides, but I don't think that we've fully defined what the scope of services is gonna be, or how that relationship's gonna be with the visitors, or even with our residents, as far as writing tickets or enforcement. And I think that would need to be flushed out. So I guess what I'd propose is that if we do make a motion here, or I could even make the motion, that we do adopt the, the summer model that the administration has recommended, and that maybe we table a conversation about how we go about getting the full implementation until we get to a workshop, and maybe try to flush it out as a group and not burn up the clock, since we've got so much else on the agenda tonight.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that.
What is a motion?
Motion is to increase the BSO hiring per staff recommendation and table the next step to go full service.
Be postponed.
Postpone.
Right.
The next step to go with Pivot or whomever. Jan, Rusty.
I agree with that proposal for one important reason. We have not even checked the references on this firm. I'm sure they're fine, but there are a lot of ifs on this kind of business. Can they hire the personnel that they need to run the operation? How successful have they been in other communities? They have been hired by a number of beachside communities, so it looks good for them. But we need to verify that, that, you know, that the communities have been satisfied with their work. And so I do believe that they will still have an advantage going forward, because they've already talked to us and had a good discussion. If we, if we have sent that out to an RFP in the, in the fall, then we will have several options, and we will know for sure whether this is the one we want to choose.
And maybe we don't do that. I'm just saying, table that conversation.
Yeah, all we're talking about tonight is increasing the staff or BSO costs. Rusty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my, number one, I'm fully in favor of outsourcing parking. I know the chief is. We've had a number of conversations. I've watched the Safety Committee meetings, and I know he really does want to have this particular job responsibility, I guess, you know, turned over to an outsourcing company. And, and you know, if we want to get other quotes, I'm fine with that, too. I have no problem with that. I know there's other companies that do this other than Pivot. My biggest concern is that we, pretty historically, have had a tough time getting the BSOs, retaining the BSOs, most of them being college students. They get here a little bit late for us, most of them, and they leave a little early, because they have to go back to school. And, you know, that's, that's, that's somewhat of a problem there. And it, and it has been historically. So I appreciate that we want to, you know, just really ramp it up and try to do this internally. I'm just worried that we're gonna end up, you know, if we don't really jump on this pretty quickly and make some decisions and go with an outsourcing arrangement, that we're just gonna have another season where it's pretty chaotic in terms of parking on this island, and be shorthanded. And we're not, we're also not gonna have possibly the BSOs that we need to control or patrol the beach, looking for other violations also, whether it be alcohol or whatever. So fully in favor of outsourcing, but if, if the staff thinks that we need to go this direction and just hold back for right now, put this other plan in place, I could go along with that. But I think we do need to move with as great a sense of urgency as we can to do this in the, in the future.
Mayor, if I may, the, the company Pivot Parking would have to go out and hire the staffing that they would propose to satisfy, I guess, our needs this, this season. So we would be essentially competing in the same pool of applicants for people to come in and, and whether it's joining us as a BSO or joining them as parking attendants. So I think, you know, that was one of the questions that we had with them when we had a meeting to discuss the proposal. They would have to fully, from other communities, to move into this role. So they would have to go through the same hiring process as the city. And whether they could be more successful than us, I don't, I don't know.
Blair?
Yeah, I, I see it as two issues. And in talking with the chief, if we outsource, we have boots on the ground that are doing nothing but a presence in our public parking areas. I think that's important. If it's BSOs, and the chief has a missing child or some other emergency on the beach, he's pulling everybody, and they're going to the beach. And that happens weekly, if not daily, in the summertime. He's got those issues. So I think we ought to go on and gamble with Pivot. It's a short period of time. Let them hire the people. If we, if, if that is not the will of this council, then I would at least ask that we give authority to staff to increase the salary of BSOs over the $18 an hour so that we can attract these people. But this has to be done immediately. We have people being shot on the beach. It's getting ready to happen again on May 6th. They told us that. They said, they're coming. And they said, they're gonna bring guns. We have to deal with this with an urgent matter. And I want to give him as much support, him being Chief Cornet, as much support as possible. And that would mean hiring out traffic violations, because right now, we are not properly enforcing traffic violations, at least on Palm Boulevard. And it's only gonna get worse.
Douglas, you want? John or Kevin, anything from y'alls view, questions or comments?
Oh.
Go ahead. Okay.
No, I don't have any. Yeah, no any questions or comments, just what's the motion on the floor?
Motion is to increase the BSO hiring budget for 2023 season and pick up the outs, full outsourced model at a later date.
And I, I'm up for the urgency if we wanted, I think we should address it at the next workshop. I just, and to Blair's point, if we need to increase wages, if we're in a wage war with other municipalities, then we do what we need to do.
That's what I was just gonna ask, if, if, you know, making it, increasing it a dollar or something an hour, would, would, do we think that would?
Yeah, Chief, what do you see in?
I mean, name your price.
I think there has been at least one other municipality that's a beach community that increased theirs higher than ours here recently. So we are competing with that, that beach community. I think they are at 19 and some change per hour. So I, money talks. I, I think that helps recruit people. Definitely, when I'm talking to these individuals that are coming in and getting these job offers, they, they like that. Confident they would like more, even more than that.
Sir, can we do like an incentive program, where if they write a certain amount of tickets, they get more?
But they're, they're college kids. They're college kids, and they want to make as much money as they can during the period of time they're out of school.
Why don't we, why don't we give the administration the authority to be able to competitively bid to get the staff on it? I mean, we're talking about a buck an hour, or here and there. Let's just let them do it.
Yeah. Yeah, my personal opinion, I think this is a better use of taxpayer money as opposed to paying an outsourcer.
I would agree.
People to do this, and we got some control. And I think we just, Blair, to your point, we pin our ears back and hire as fast as we can and get as many people feet on the ground that we can, we can have happen.
I did, just so you know, I, meeting with our staff today, I instructed them to repost all of the beach service officer positions. So we're flooding that information out on social media again as well, just to try to ramp up recruitment.
Yeah. So Desiree, is this motion on the table clear enough for?
Are we increasing the budget by how much? Were we doubling it to allow us the flexibility to hire double the amount of BSOs that we were initially planning on doing?
I mean, that's, that's your financial analysis.
That's right.
Does that get you what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it allows us the opportunity to navigate and, and make adjustments to the hourly rate as well.
And how about the salary?
We just, she just said that.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Kevin or John, I want to make sure y'alls vote got, got registered.
I'm against the BSOs. I, I want to go along with the recommendation from the chief and staff, so I'm a nay.
Well, now, just to be clear, the chief and staff are recommending increasing the BSO and not doing the outsourcing.
This summer.
This summer. Just this summer.
Got it. I'm sorry, I must not heard. I'm sorry. Aye.
Yeah, not trying to change your vote, just trying to make sure we got clarity.
No, 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 no. No, I, I thought that we were voting for the outsourcing.
Nope.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. John?
I'm aye.
All right. Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next item, consideration of 2023 surfing application from Philip Antman from Salt Marsh, Salt Marsh Surf. You can see that it's for 21st to 23rd Avenue. He's a repeat instructor.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next item is seven, Boards and Commissions Report. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in April. Planning Commission, meeting to be held tomorrow. ATAX Advisory Committee, no meeting in April. Environmental Advisory Committee, the minutes were attached. Next is ordinances, resolutions, and petitions. This is second reading, so for ordinance 2023-03, to require lawn commercial services to remove yard debris from residential and rental properties. You'll recall, we had approval of a first reading, went back to the Public Services and Facilities Committee for further discussion and modification, and they are not recommending that for approval. But we still need a motion and to vote on it.
The, okay.
We need a motion to approve and then vote on it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Public Services and Facilities.
No.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Approve the ordinance. That's all this to it.
All right, second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the ordinance.
We do.
And we'll vote accordingly based on, maybe based on recommendation from the Public Safety Services Committee.
Yeah, the committee made no recommendation on this particular ordinance.
Okay.
We're talking about 2023-03.
Yep.
Yes.
My fault, I thought they did.
No, they, there was no recommendation from the committee to adopt ordinance 2023-03 to require lawn, lawn commercial services to remove debris from residential and rental properties.
We, my, my recollection is that we basically decided not, that we, we didn't want to push it forward.
Just call, yeah, call for a question.
Yeah.
It's an easy one.
So all those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Good.
Hit the buzzer.
Ordinance 2023-04, to increase from two to four the number of resident parking decals that may be issued to non-resident property owners. Again, had first committee, first reading approval, went back to public safety, no changes, and I believe they are recommending approval of this particular ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. First reading, which is by title only, 2023-05, to require a permit from the Alapalms Police a permit from the Allopalm Police Department for events of gatherings on public property, including the beach, that are expected to involve more than 25 people.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have one question.
Title only.
Title only, okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Desiree?
Proceedurally, Mayor, the police department has requested that this ordinance be in place ahead of the planned gathering on the beach on May 6th. To that effect, I would recommend that, that you call a special council meeting next Tuesday for you all to consider second reading and adoption of this ordinance.
Because we just had seven days is our period to wait for a second reading.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ordinance 2023 oh six, to increase the short-term rental license base rate by $100.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2023 oh seven, to raise revenue and adopt budget for the city of Allopalm, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We planned on having a public hearing at the next regular council meeting on May 23rd.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Item C, Resolutions and Proclamations. Resolution 2023 oh three, to request the SEDOT to implement now option five presented for the IOP Connector Bridge.
So move.
I know, we, we voted on it. This is for the actual resolution. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second. Further discussion or?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Nay.
Thank you. Resolution 2023 oh four, to adopt the revised local comprehensive beach management plan.
So move.
Second.
Desiree, anything to add here from your view on the management plan?
Just a couple of changes. The revised version that you have in the packet that's public in the city's website includes an amended zoning map. Y'all recall, late last year, City Council amended the zoning map to include additional preservation and conservation areas. The, the first version you had in your packet included the old zoning map. So the, the version that's going to be presented to OCRM will include the correct zoning map.
What's our timing for next steps to?
So the version that, that you're seeing has already been reviewed and discussed by OCRM. We don't anticipate any issues for them to adopt it. The next step would be for them to officially issue a letter of approval to the city, which could take several weeks. And then the further action would need to be taken until five years from now, when an updated version needs to be done again.
Yeah, thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2023 oh five, to recognize Gordon Wheeler for his support of the golf tournament benefiting the Prostate Cancer Foundation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Further questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Last, last resolution, 2023 oh six, to oppose implementation of proposed bill, House 3253.
Motion to approve. I have, if it's second, I have a question. Second. It's just to, it's just to be, the resolution that was prepared in-house.
Yes.
So staff.
Desiree, Mac, prepared.
Okay, thank you.
It's very similar to the resolution City Council adopted last year in opposition to a similar bill. We made some tweaks to it. So the one that you have, we worked on last time and this time.
Well, appreciate you making that a priority. It's very important.
Scott and Rusty.
Yeah, just a question. So what is the plan on how we're going to either deliver, communicate, represent the resolution tomorrow or?
So two pieces. I'm going to sign it tonight, assuming we approve it. And then we'll email it to Bustos and our lobbyists tonight so that they have it. And I'll hand-deliver it and read it into minutes tomorrow at the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Rusty, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. This, this may be nothing, I don't know. But on the resolution itself, it mentions Representative Lynn Bennett as being a sponsor, being a co-sponsor. She's no longer in office. Is this the original bill that was put in, put in last year?
First time by Hewitt.
Yeah, Lynn Bennett is no longer in office. She was not elected last time.
Hmm, it, it's listed in the current, current bill as a co-sponsor, but we'll double check that and make that correct.
Yeah, well, it must have been the original, because it was, it was in committee last year and sort of died in committee, right?
Yeah, but I think the original bill had only three or four co-sponsors. This one had more. But I'll, I'll, we'll double check and make the adjustment after approval before the mayor signs it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she does need to be removed.
Questions?
I'm looking at it online. I think she would need to remove a couple of them.
Okay, thank you, Mac. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There being no further business?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Off record at 8:15. Thank you.
Who called for 8:30? I didn't think we were going to make it.